Yes, I'm sorry.
Just remembered I didn't have her pulled on. Sorry.
Yes, oh, please, please, yes.
So the document.
Yes.
Are. So where are those files being housed? And are they open to the public?
They are open to the public in a way that if someone asked for them, we would go grab them. They're downstairs in archive rooms downstairs. So they're here. Like, no one would go down there and rummage through them. But if someone said, could I see, you know, such and such a document? I mean, the good thing is, like, the building permits. The building permits are all on electronic now, but we moved them all over. So we had files downstairs that we packed up, scanned it out, came back. Now it's on electronically. So if someone comes in and says, could I see, you know, 1 Bethlehem Pike? My house at 1 Bethlehem Pike? We could pull that up electronically. And if they wanted copies of it, we could print it and copy it.
My question actually was, are the electronic files open to the public?
Yes, yes. So if someone comes in, we have a workstation in one of the rooms back here that they could come in and see their file. No, not at this point. Okay, I think next to you. Again, this was in the budget last year about upgrading the the public restrooms in this building. They are the original bathrooms. And there's a picture of it right there, some dated stuff in there. That number is really a placeholder. We had a contractor out, we're still waiting for his number to come in there. So that is, that number hopefully changes. We have three buildings, well, one, one property and one building. The Ingersoll House, the main house is on the left there, the barn is on the middle. And the McCormick property is up on the right in the corner. All of them need roof replacements and gutters. So we have a quote from a contractor for that amount. Obviously, that would have to get bid out. But we had some visitors in the Ingersoll House that were coming in and making their living there. Some raccoons were living in the Ingersoll House that we had exterminated, well, exterminated, I guess. Or we had a contractor come in and remove them. Again, everyone in this room knows we're looking for land and a building for a new public works facility. I'd like to just budget $50,000 for legal engineering. Pen Amler Park, paving of the parking lot down at Pen Amler Park. This was in the budget last year, too. We're still waiting for permits to come in through BP. The number last year was 61,000 that we had. We did put this out for bid in the road program. And that was the number that came in, 1366. So we were a little bit shocked with that number as well. Obviously, this would have to get bid out again. We spoke last year about upgrading the sign at Veterans Memorial Park to an electronic sign. That's the existing sign there that would be replaced with electronic. That would help. I know Sandy, the recreation director, goes down there and physically changes the sign. This would make it more easier for everyone to put a different message up there more recent or more often. The EAC requested signs, sign markers for the waterway crossings on the roads. This is an example that we found. So I believe this is the right number of signs and posts according to their response to me. 224 signs on 112 posts. And the number came, someone gave me that number as well. I don't know if that's the correct number. It seems a little light for 224 signs and 112 posts. Water fountains in the park, you see the park fountain on the left. It's the old type of fountain. We do have problems with it leaking. They're older, we're having trouble getting parts to it. And on the right-hand side would be like a water bottle filling station and a fountain. So eight fountains in four parks, 37,500. Just, it's a little bit clearer, a little bit nicer of a water fountain. If you have the bottle filler station, you don't have the potential of contaminations and stuff. Please. It is not, it was about COVID. The request or the direction that we've received from the state was that public fountains should not be turned on. Trash can lid replacements, right now they have metal trash can lids. We're looking to replace them with composite lids. Do we know how many lids this is?
Forty, Mitch said forty.
Forty?
Yep.
So forty lids. You may remember, we put a PICO grant in for the new picnic tables in the parks that, as you see, we replaced some of the boards and some of them are bowing and so forth. So we have eight regular picnic tables and two ADA picnic tables for $15,000. Hopefully, we get the PICO grant that we submitted for, and it'll be less money. But we would like to replace these picnic tables throughout the parks. Yep. I believe that's the total number that we have in the parks. I don't know. It sounds, it sounds high, but that, that is what it's costing these days. Composite materials instead of the wood. Vent track mowers for the basins and the trails. As you see with the tires, this is on the left-hand side with the tires. It won't, will say get stuck or sink into the ground, which helps the environment. It's a cleaner pruning mechanism on here. We had some maintenance done around the Truware and Truware and Trail that we got some calls about how the flail mower left, left the sides of the trails, I'll say. This was already in the budget before that happened, but this would clean it up a little bit out there, would help with the trimming of the, cutting back the bushes from the trails and stuff. Yes.
If we talk about that just a moment.
Yes.
The, I saw at least one letter from the resident. How many did it belong to maintenance of the trail? What is it that requires that type of maintenance? Were there trees overhanging?
Overhanging a trail or a strip of grass that would keep clear for emergency, the police or ambulance to be back there. We try to keep the trail wide enough that you can actually drive along if somebody needs assistance.
So we don't let the stuff overhang the pavement and then a strip of grass along most of the trails. So it's not something we like to do every year, but eventually the stuff grows out over the trail. And the guys even like cutting it on the lawnmowers get hit in the face and stuff. So we use the same equipment we use for roads, which does, it just thrashes the brush and stuff. This mower would be more like your hedge trimmer where it like scissors and actually prunes the the branches instead of just thrashing them. The flail axe actually just spins and it really does, it just rips it up. So, which is great for along the roads. It's a good machine, it does what it's supposed to do. This is a little more delicate for something that's like that, where that you're trying to preserve the brush, not kill it with the flail axe. But we do need to keep it open enough to be able to access it.
My concern is that we may be damaging really valuable neighbors in this process. And thank you for that explanation. Maybe we can take this up with the EAC, but it would be good to have somebody that's knowledgeable about the local flora and fauna, what to really pay special attention to and what's an invasive, that, yeah, cut that to the ground. That could use a little bit more rationale for an alveolar cut instead of cutting one of the ones.
Sure, we, you know, any, anybody who wants to give us more information, we'd be glad to get and try to, the point of the trails is for enjoyment and to view the nature, so we don't want to destroy it. But we do need to keep it trimmed to a certain extent.
I think that's a situation that would benefit from, you know, working together I do appreciate that it's not a minor or trivial task, keeping the trails clear. But there is also a consideration for trying to maintain our power literally made it in the face of a lot of the places.
Sure. Absolutely. And that was Fred Zollers, that was the Public Works Director, for those at home. Oh, and the second piece of machinery, I'm sorry, is the rototiller. This is, you know, $4,000. But we have been renting a machine like this for, I guess, forever. So we thought maybe we just bring a machine in and have it so we can use it all the time. It'll save time on people going and picking up the machine and making sure that it's available and then returning it, so. That's up.
People are writing in the chat, so I can't do both things.
Okay. This is the Township Services Building that we've been discussing. I just added a placeholder for more planning and design for that building. And then to adding two radar speed display signs for the police, well, Police Department and for the township, I should say. So that would add, that would put four, four altogether, so. Some more thoughts for a squad room remodel. You'll see the, that's actually two rooms, you're looking at two doors. Two rooms with a wall in between. Would like to take out that middle wall and add some new furniture in there for the police. And then there's our, the rest of the portion of the RACP grant to the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company's RACP grant, $300,000. Contributions to the fire company and ambulance, total 195,000. Our road program this year is, you know, 524,000. We have a cul-de-sac on Beth Drive that needs some attention. Cathcart Road, Forest Drive, Hoover Avenue, portions of Meeting House Road, Ridgeview Lane, Sunset Drive, our portion of Sweetsford Road, Township Line Road, and Wooded Pond. I believe that comes to three, three and a quarter miles. It's more than last year. Believe it's three and a quarter miles this year. And we have some studies up there, the Act 209 study, which would be done by McMahon Associates, $62,000. That's for traffic impact fees. McKean Road Traffic Calming Study, which we began this year and will finish next year for $40,000. Stakeholders for the McKean Road would be Jansen, J and J, and MRA. Possibly YMCA, they have not committed anything at this point. New dump truck and a base station radio for the Public Works Department. Behind the building here is Old Bethlehem Pike, it's a culvert bridge. It's in need of repair and the engineer believes it's in need of replacement. So we've received several cost estimates from the engineering company. $786,000 to replace that. So we're hoping, and, you know, we've reached out to the Senator and to the state reps to see if they had any ideas for grant funding for this. We've looked ourselves for grant funding. Can't seem to get any, any idea on some funding for this particular bridge. So we will continue and me and Ms. McNeely were talking earlier about possibly using funds from the CARES Act if we can. So I'm going to look into that for this, too. This is Arley Grant. That's, we, we put this Arley Grant in, this is a replacement of the traffic signal at Truellen and Penland Pike. The total cost of the project is $463,400. The grant would be for $437,400. And township match would be $26,000. So we're hoping to get that, obviously. It's just one of the oldest lights in the township and it, does it have preemption on it? Does not exist. The other lights. So we'll try to upgrade that. The Arley Grant actually just came out today for next year for the application for the, for possibly the actual last light in township. That is an older light, which would be Tennis Avenue and Narstown Road. So we've approved McMahon to go out for that grant as well. So he'll be putting something together for that, the next round of Arley Grant as well. So hopefully we get at least this one, maybe both. That wouldn't be until 2023 or '24, so. We have some grant funding, multimodal phase two would be, as you saw, the culvert was done in last year. We'll do some construction this year on the phase two, which is the widening of Narstown Road, the widening of Sumney Town Pike. And that's under the multimodal phase, phase two. We have the Monka 2040 grant for Bethlehem Pike pedestrian improvement. This is for two pedestrian bridges down toward the Wawa and Bergy Ford. I am told that the project cost at the time, this would have, would have covered it for two bridges. Now this is only one bridge, so. We have to decide what side we want to put a bridge on. Monka 2040, that's the Digger Road Trail Crossing. You see a picture of that on the bottom here. We're going to straighten that out, put some flashers out there. And we've received that, that grant. That'll be done in 2022. We have a stream bank restoration project, which is also behind the building here that we received funding for, $100,000 from DCD. $158,920 is the total project. So the township funds would be 58,000. And then we have a project or a grant application out there for a dam study down at the Whistaken School District from DCD, we're waiting for for the awards for that one, too. And we just have a stormwater management that we put in every year for $60,000 to do compliance requirements for stormwater. And here's just the summary of the grant funding. If, as you see, all the way on the right-hand side, you'll see three that we applied for that were waiting, waiting for awards, and then four that were approved. If we get all the grants, it's $2,505,500. The township match is $378,000 for a total cost of $2.4 million for these projects. So $2.4 million projects, township would pay 378,000 if all the grants are received. We have some sewer projects, Ambler Treatment Plant, capital improvement of 316,750. And sanitary sewer, this is the I and I work that the township does. We study the areas, figure if there's any leakage or penetrations into this sanitary sewer system, and then we would go in and fix it. So as you saw in 2021, I think we spent about $12,000 so far. That was just for I and I work. So if we don't find any leakage, that, that would be pretty much what we spend, then we move on to another section of the township. If we find leakage, it could be up to 200,000. The next step, as I said, the operating budgets will be distributed on October 29th to the board. If you see a police officer pull up your driveway, don't get alarmed, it's your budget. Budget meeting is Tuesday, November 9th, it's a regular, regular scheduled meeting. And then it would be for a review from the 9th and hopefully if everyone is, is comfortable with it, we could have it adopted by December 14th. That's it. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. Like I said, the operating is looking very similar to 2021. There is one, well, I can ask if there's any questions on the capital side of it first, then kind of dive into operating. Yes.
Yes, so the, you show, well, first of all, let me thank you for putting this together. This is really great.
So thank you for that, for making this very clear for us. So my first question is about the property that you showed, the Ingersoll property and the additional house that we just bought recently. Yeah. Do we have in place a plan yet for maintaining those properties? And the, you know, the purpose of, I clearly see that the Ingersoll property is being used for storage, but the other property, we don't have it mapped out yet right now, do we?
Correct, no, at this point, we do not.
So that will be up to this board to come up with a plan for those?
Yeah, I know, we were speaking about having a star commission and putting that on whatever to-do list, come up with ideas.
Okay, the Ingersoll building looks like it's not in very good repair. So my question is, if we replace the roof, then what else needs to be done to maintain that property?
At this point,
everything on the inside would have to be redone, but on the outside, we'd be fine. We have a patio that may, may have to get pulled up. But other than. Oh, windows, okay. Okay, so the windows, as Mr. Zoller said, the windows would probably be the next project.
What I'm trying to understand is, we keep people at nine weeks of this property. What is our ultimate goal for the property?
I think the ultimate goal is to find a place for a new public works facility so that we can, we can move out of that barn and then sell it and get, get it off our books. Give it to someone, not give it to, sell it to someone that will rehab it, bring it back to life.
It seems like it's going to die before we get to that point, that the right things are going now.
Well, that's why, we want to put the roof on so it doesn't, you know, it's not neglected that it comes up and we keep things at least, it doesn't fall down around us, so.
I think it's a lovely building and worth preserving. I'm just not sure that we have a solid plan for what the township should invest in what, you know, how we should maintain that, actually both properties. I think we need to spend a little time coming up with a rationale for what we want to do with those properties. Thank you.
No problem.
So I just wanted, I guess, clarity, I guess, or I know that the comprehensive plan has not been updated and I'm not sure exactly how many years, maybe 20, something like that.
Right, we had 2000, then in 2014, we went out and we looked at
Specifically. But a full, a full comprehensive plan hasn't been done since 2000? 2000, okay, so 21 years, all right. So given that, I know that this makes it hard, but do we have any other shovel-ready projects that we are clear about wanting to move forward? And I'm specifically talking about parking rack. Like I understand that we're trying to do maintenance with the park benches and the water fountain, but has there been any kind of conversation around upgrading or going beyond just the maintenance part? And, and by shovel-ready, I mean, and this is related to the bridge, have we gotten our estimates, have we looked at what a what the future would look like? I think the concern around specifically the bridge, but maybe also with parking wreck, if you're not shovel-ready when you go to your state rep and your state senators, they can't actually bring it forth to any of the appropriations committees because you don't have the necessary things in place to say we're ready to go. So I guess with the bridge specifically, are we ready to go? Like, do we have a one pager to outline what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, what the cost would be, if we're going to pay prevailing wage? And we've gotten three or four bids?
We're not that far along, we have a cost estimate, we have engineering is done, so.
I think it would be to get, I think we should get bids and, and ensure that it's prevailing wage bids so that we understand, oh yeah, I just want to make sure. And if some people don't like that, and um, if we can present that as a complete package to our state rep and state senator, then they can advocate on our behalf, but until we do that, we're waiting for a grant to come up rather than having them advocate for the monies to actually fix the issue. And then I guess kind of just with parking wreck, I just wanted to know if there's been any conversation about upgrading any of the, any of the equipment, any of the facilities, kind of identifying, you know, a, a plan moving forward. And I, and I assume that this would be part of a comprehensive plan, but given that it's been twenty-one years, I was thinking maybe.
Yeah, and I, I know Mitch Colt on, on the line here. And I, I told Sandy that she could stay home because she was looking at the park benches and we already talked about, or the picnic tables, and we already talked about. But what the plan is, is to go to the Park and Rec Board and come up with a plan for the equipment. And they want to upgrade all the equipment in all the parks, but they want to come up with a plan with the Park and Rec Board. So, so they thought this year would be a planning year, next year would be the replacement for the parks.
I have another question. This is just a sort of a commentary. So Chuck and I know we're at P Sats and Hershey's this past week and on the way there, I noticed, well, I've been to Hershey a few times, but I'm always impressed by the roundabouts and how the traffic goes and it doesn't have to stop, you know, you just keep going and, uh, you know, no one's sitting there releasing fumes and burning gas needlessly. Has this ever come up that Lower Gwinnett install a particularly roundabout around where the Bethlehem Pike and Sumney Town come together, is that just out of the question, not feasible?
I don't know if that's ever come up, they are talking about a roundabout maybe on McKean Road in front of the Y M C A and, and Jansen to slow people down that way. That, that was one of the ideas that the, the traffic engineer came up with. I don't know about this intersection here, Bethlehem Pike and. Well, we, we can go to, again, I know we're doing the work on the county roads, but that would be a state road, county road, so. And Spring House Tavern is historic, so I don't know if that interferes with anything. Yes. Anyone else? Anyone on line?
No, nobody answered, we did have a couple chats earlier, which I don't think either person's still on, but one of the ones is from Kathy P, who is Kathy Pagano. Leslie Katz and her during the last audit, elected auditors meeting, they had voiced just some suggestions that the township look at traffic mitigation township-wide, not just certain locations. And they were proponents of purchasing additional speed sign, radar, speed signs. And Leslie asked if the traffic studies that were on this presentation, if they would be extended beyond the two areas stated. There are other places in the township that need mediation as well, and I just responded to her that the Act two oh nine study is, is a township-wide study, it's not focused on an individual road. They were the only comments received.
Sorry, yeah, we have two small ones, which we see, and then we have one speed trailer, which is on wheels, and the request was for two more smaller units. So we have a total of four small units. So, yeah, we, so, you know, we've talked about this a lot, I, I really do like the idea of a, a couple each year as opposed to buying five to ten at one time. Their shelf life, we will get into a, we're going to run into a scenario, three, four years down the road where it's going to be, we're no longer going to get the warranty coverage, so we'll be replacing them instead of having that big impact, that's just my opinion. There is a, which each unit, there is a fifteen hundred hour a year cost to maintain them, which gives us the software to get the data from the machine and that includes the warranty. So each unit is fifteen hundred dollars per year to operate. So we're going to be at seventy-five hundred if we get these two, because we'll have a total of five units. Well, they don't have to go on the same road, they could be, you know. Correct, you don't. The reason we've put, we've mimicked a couple is one, our traffic engineer has asked for a report and he needed both ways. So that's why both were placed at one spot. There was a time earlier where one was on Pen Ambler Road and one was on Penn and Pike. So Penn and Pike, we only had this, the issue going towards Whitping, towards Blue Bell. Coming, coming in the direction towards Bethlehem Pike, they were slowing down naturally with the curve and the, and the streetlight, traffic light. So they don't need to work in together, they're, they're individual units. So. Yeah, so we've had this conversation with Chad before on traffic calming measures that, and, and they really take place on individual streets. The, the biggest one was on Gwinnett Knoll, where, you know, the traffic calming was some one-way streets, some no-left turns. You may place a median in the middle of the road. You know, one of the suggestions that everybody chuckles at was park out the street. You know, stagger your parking is, is an excellent way to calm traffic. Now, a lot of people don't like to park in the street and I get that. And other than that, Danielle, the really, the only, the big one that people bring up is speed bumps or humps or, what do they call them now, cushions? Table, tables? Yeah, I've heard them called cushions before where fire trucks don't have that issue. Anytime that comes up, you know, every, you know, there are a group that will want them. And then this was pretty close to, you know, went to a survey in Gwinnett Knoll probably three years ago. And the results were no, when some realtors got involved in the neighborhood, that you're acknowledging that you have a traffic speeding problem, you're basically saying that out loud and housing values will go down as a result of that. The second part of it was nobody wanted it in front of their house. Because it's loud, they do make noise. In conversations with other police chiefs, there are some areas that have them. Some have them and then they ask to be removed. So it's really a, a very, it's a touchy subject. Not touchy, that's the wrong word, you're going to get strong opinions both ways. Yeah, well, we have them at Penland Woods, right, that's where we put. Yeah, they're like rubber and they bolt down and you can remove them in the, in the winter, so you don't plow them up with the snow. So we. They, we, there are, but they're at, at Penland Woods, they, they don't go anywhere else. Yeah, they, um, and they're not on a road, they're actually in our driveway. Yeah, they're not, um, I, I, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know that Penn dot wants you to justify them to, like, you would be in, you know, it's one of those things like signs, flashing lights, it's, you can't just put and that's why you see them when you go on a, a business complex, a business is not, they can do what they want, it's private property. They're not following the rules. So, and that was my only thought was Penland Woods, that's where we've had them. We have them on Houston Road in front of the school, permanent. The permanent cushions are on, I keep calling cushions, on Houston Road, they're very effective. Correct, correct. Correct, right, right, so, you know, we do have them on a township road. That answer your question? Okay.
Said I was Phil Donahue earlier and Jamie didn't know who I was talking about.
So Craig, I'd like to talk a minute about, so Danielle has brought this up already, the comprehensive plan revision. So tell me about that, we have already contracted with Gilmore and Associate to prepare that and what is that going to entail?
I, I think we, we reached out to the county for their number and they were going to, it was going to take them three years. Gilmore, I believe it's eighteen months that it'll take them to do the study. And it'll be meeting with, I mean, we'd have to put a, a board together, whether, we just want to say the planning commission would do it, where we put people together, a separate board. So there would be many meetings, bringing the public for their thoughts on it and collect the data and put it all together. The way that it's collected, yes, it'll be the same, hopefully it doesn't look the same.
But it's not just going to be nickel and dime, it's going to be a whole.
Correct, in two thousand and fourteen, we went out just to specifically look at three properties. And by the time we were meeting and having the meetings and putting things together, the properties were sold and and it kind of went by the wayside because, what they were proposing and what we had in mind just didn't jive. No, this is going to be the, we'll do the whole township, so we know, you know, any growth, any areas that we can protect, you know, transportation, you know, any kind of infrastructure that we can look at, so it'll be a full, full comprehensive plan.
The first one is, is it really about a grant, I just came out within the past week around electric charging stations and I believe it's through Pico, it's a twenty-three page grant, so I didn't get all the way through it. It was offering it to organizations, municipalities and individuals as it relates to adding them. And I believe the deadline is in late December, have we looked into that and beyond the two places that we have the charging stations now to maybe provide them train stations or other areas or, you know?
We do it on our property, we could put maybe Penn and Woods would be a good spot.
Or a place somebody would want to leave a car to charge and like, like a train station or, you know?
Yeah, we don't. I mean, we could talk a second and see.
Well, like on our property, I'm thinking like Ingersoll Field or something like that, you, they still, they still walk to the Penn and Train Station or, you know, that kind of thing. Where you can leave your car and it makes sense to know, to leave your car, yeah. Okay, there were, that was just one thing that I wanted to throw out as part of a consideration, the other thing is, when we were talking about the application for the grant related to the flooding on Brookside Avenue, I saw that we broke out the monies, are we putting in the money regardless of if we get the grant or not as far as the capital budget?
It'll, yes, well, it's, it's in, nothing's being approved tonight, but it would be in that matrix, uh, the matrix that I sent out to everyone, basically just the bullet points of the presentation.
Yeah, so, so. Regardless of if the grant funds come through or not. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, thank you.
And that would be very similar with the picnic tables, too. Because I'm not, well, I keep saying, but hopefully we get the Pico grant, but I don't know if we're going to. Mark, anything?
A lot of this has been on prior, uh, to do this.
Yes.
And prior, uh, projects that we didn't fund for budgetary reasons, but all of it looks pretty familiar. My, my little concern is that in coming year, uh, I think we're all right in two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, I gotta yell louder, I, I think we're okay for next year for all the projects that need to be done for the clean water project two thousand twenty-two, there is, I think, just under two hundred projects for the entire Wizard Hickin Valley. But I don't, I think we're okay right now, I think two thousand twenty-three is going to be a interesting year because now, I, I believe we're going to get approval and a court, from the regulators to proceed with the clean water projects at some level. And now we have to actually do it. So I'm a little concerned about two thousand twenty-three because, because depending on, you know, Lower Gwinnett's got a large proportion of the Wizard Hickin Creek in it. And we're going to have some, some major projects to do. So, but I think that's going to start at two thousand twenty-three, so two thousand twenty-two is going to be formative. I'm also very concerned about the, the fire service, as you know. You know, it's an expensive proposition. You, they can't fund fire trucks anymore with hoagie sales, it's just not possible. As I'm sure Tessie, you, you probably know. So we're going to have to make sure our fire service EMS is fully funded and I think that could be a challenge, too, we want to build a firehouse, so. A lot of interesting capital projects are right on the, on the cusp, right, so I'm a little concerned about all of those, so. Budgeting all of this, I think we're in good financial shape, but I don't know that we can pay for all the projects out of pocket in the year in which we're going to, they're going to be needed, so we might have to go to, and hopefully the state that has a loan program, right, Craig, so how much, if we need to go to the state to get a loan, is there a cap on that? There must be a cap, I just don't know what it is. Yeah, whatever, whatever we would need, right, without going to the, the bond market has transaction costs associated with it. And if we can avoid the bond market, not that there's anything wrong with the bond market, but I'm just looking at the cheapest way to fund some of these projects. In the event that we don't have enough, uh, reserves. But again, I think the challenges are gonna be in two thousand and twenty-three, depending on the regulators and, uh, you know, what we're gonna. Be required to do for our MS four projects. So there's a lot going on. We have to stabilize the Ingersoll property. Tessie, I agree with you. It's falling apart. Um, start with the roof. We gotta do something for the windows. They're leaking. And we gotta get that equipment out of there. Hopefully we'll get an answer. Um, about additional acreage available with the township. Uh, at another location, we're hopeful for that. And then we can move the stuff out of the barn. And then once we get the stuff out of the barn and then we can fix it up and maybe put it on the market if that's what the board decides to do. So in the long range, uh, planning and all of this, there's a lot of moving pieces. And, uh, you know, it really depends on a lot of other factors that we don't really control. As normal, right? So other than that, I think, you know, tonight's what I expected to get continuation of. Some of the things I'm really concerned about the windows was I back, when I was back to the Ingersoll house, I actually thought the roof was in better shape than the windows. You know, fortunately we were able to cap the chimneys and, and prevent that from further damaging the building. Um, but, you know, we have to do what we can to seal the building in. I don't know what the windows will cost. Maybe we could look at that in addition to the roof. Just to make sure we stabilize the whole thing. So can you get a, um, a number on that? To do those windows because they are, they are falling apart. We'll fix the roof and the windows will blow out or something. That's not a good thing. Um, but o- other than that, I think we're, this is a very good presentation, Craig. Thank you.
Yes, we can look at, uh, numbers for the windows and, and add that.
I have a few questions. Uh, just talking about the windows. So tracking money is available for construction and renovation. As a, and there's also historic money available for construction and renovation. So I don't know how we made any application, I think. For either the roof, the windows or any of the maintenance inside as it relates to construction or renovation of any of the historic homes.
We have not.
So I know that we talked about forming a historic commission, but I think that that it's almost imperative at this point so that we do not lose some of the history. Um, but there's lots of money available and the McCormick House has a very significant. It's different than Ingersoll as it relates to being, you know, for first desegregated school. Um, there's money specifically related. For those types of projects. So I don't know. I like, I know that we've talked in the past about the historic commission or committee coming together, but I think we need to sooner rather than later so that we can capitalize on. Some of the state money. Uh, the second question I just had was around, uh, around revenue and I guess it's for you, Chuck. Um, are we, are we acquiring or collecting business privilege tax on everyone that comes in, does business within the township, even as it relates to construction and. Just minor things like road paving and that kinda thing. Are we doing that for everybody and has that been done?
Well, there's a. This is, this is sex.
I don't think we have an effort to collect it on the temporary. That with the, uh, local services tax, there, there's a period of time.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure whether there were any with business taxes or not. We can look into that.
Okay. Um. And then I guess, I think one other question, but I lost it for a second. Um. Oh, my God, I lost it. It was related to grant funding, but.
Related to the bonds?
No, it's probably not gonna come back at this point. Uh. Yeah, I don't have it, but it was for Chuck though. If I remember, I'll.
No more requests.
Yep.
No, I have one more request.
Uh, my, my request is could you put some more mics in the budget? I know we're tight with the, the budget. I like to be tight with money. Uh, but we should at least have maybe two more microphones, uh. With, with a little tripod, maybe we can talk into, thank you.
Yeah. Looking for a tripod, uh, little holder up there, but I don't know. We can't seem to find one. But yes, we'll put that in. Uh, that won't be a capital.
So I know that I just wanted, wanted to know one last thing that we were evaluated by Moody's. I know that we do have the triple, you know, triple A bond rating, but I know that sometimes being overfunded sometimes looks as a negative. Especially when you haven't, uh, raised taxes and you can kinda foresee things in the future. Um, so the fact that we're overfunded, has there been any kind of adjustment? To ensure that we're not overfunded so that our money is actually available for us to use rather than being a hundred and twelve percent actually being. Closer to a hundred percent so that we can not necessarily need a loan.
Um, Chuck, you might be able to answer that more than I do.
I know it's kind of a tough question, but it could be a quick question.
Yes. Um, we never got, never got hit hard for being overfunded. They actually like that. Uh, they don't like that. We haven't raised taxes. All we have on time.
Yeah, cause it looks like they're not planning for the future, but I think it all shows. Kind of, it did less planning if you have a hundred, you know, if you're a hundred and twelve percent funded in the pension. Looks like you have an active plan, but you're only using large funds. Especially if you know you have infrastructure things that need to be done.
I thi- I think that, that the last year was exceptionally strong market, uh, actually for two years. So I wouldn't say that we weren't planning. We weren't planning for such a good. Good years.
Yeah.
It, it's not, it's not just that I'm saying like, you understand we have a significant amount of infrastructure need. And that we're actually considering a loan versus a bond. As it relates to just dealing with some of them, not just this year or next year, maybe three, four, five years. The idea of the plan, and I guess it might circle back to the comprehensive plan, but the lack of it.
No, no, and, and, and actually we, we can't take that money out once we put it in.
No, I understand.
Yeah, well, so, so we're underfunded and we're underfunded because, uh, because of the investment profile we have. And, but the state also provides funds because we have a pension fi- uh, plan. So it's not like we're putting extra money in. It's that we, that we're, we did so well and we can't use the state money for anything else because it's dedicated. So when you throw the state money into the, the pension state money into the pension plan, there's, it's so. It would be nice to pull the money out, but there's nothing we can do with that. So as we continue to outperform. The, I would say outperform the market, but certainly get market performance in the pension plan. Hopefully we'll even be more funded in the future, uh, and not have it, uh, cost township money. So we could then take a loss and at some point that's gonna be inevitable. Uh, but the state gives us money, so we put it in and the market does what we do. And our MMO, our municipal obligation is flat.
No, I understand that we're, we're part of the plan. So I think with that plan. That we, that we plan for our pensions, that we need to be planning for our infrastructure.
So that we don't need to necessarily look at loans and bonds, especially as it relates to us having cares money, which is dedicated for infrastructure. Um, so I wouldn't want us to even think about a loan or bond when we could. And I know we don't have the comprehensive plan, but. If we strategically even were looking about just infrastructure. We could plan for the future.
Hmm. And I think we do that, um, you know.
You know, we, we, we do the road program. I mean, we're not going out for a loan for the road program. Uh, I wouldn't recommend that. Um, you know, and.
I remember talking about the wrong standing rates, the, the homes that we want or the properties that we want. Um, making sure that the maintenance, right? So isn't something that we need to pay.
Hmm, hmm.
We also have a sinking fund for sewer system. So we didn't used to have that.
And then we got rid of the, uh, the municipal authority because this township was sewered. Um, so the, and we looked at, uh, a few years ago at the potential sale of the sewer system. But our sewer system was in such good condition and our rates are, according to the analysis, low enough. Uh, that it was very attractive to, um. Potential buyers and, but we decided we wouldn't sell the asset because we didn't really need to. Uh, and then we established the, um, we made sure that the money coming in from the rental sewer rental fees had its own line item. And that we retained it. So we had an unexpected sewer problem, uh, right at the culvert. Uh, that we just finished on, on Sony Town Pike. And I can't remember the number of unplanned dollars, but I think it was a quarter of a million. So there's no way for us to know when the sewer line's gonna collapse on us. Uh, so we have to have all that money sitting in reserve and we did. And, um, and we continued to build that. So in the municipal sinking fund, I, I call it. It, so that we don't have to take out of the general reserve to do it. Um, and we didn't have that before. And in addition to that, we also, uh, funded OPEB. Now, OPEB is the obligations for non-pension related payments. And no one had that according to our, I said, no one, very few municipalities had that. So we decided to establish it, put money into that too. Because in the out years, we didn't wanna have to fund it if we were required to fund it as opposed to just recognize. That the debt existed, cause most municipalities, they were just paying it out of earnings or, you know, taxes. So that fixed that as well. And we're in very good shape for OPEB. So when you look at all of them, we're, but, but I'm agreeing with you, right? We can, we can do more long range planning and I think we need to do that with EMS. Cause these fire trucks are not getting cheaper. And we have volunteers in both the east and the west side of the township. And we gotta make sure they're funded. Properly, right? In the out years, because that new fire truck. Couple of years ago, the ladder truck in North Penn was a million and a half. And that was, that's just a base level truck. It didn't have any equipment on it and all the, all the things you need for a fire truck. And I'll bet you they spent half a million or a million on additional fit out. So it just. So, so we're doing that. We gotta do more of that. Absolutely. We gotta do, we gotta do more of that, build those reserves in each one of those funds. Because there is gonna be another time like two thousand and eight. Where our pension fund wasn't doing great. And if we're, we, we have to even all of those things out, but, um, I think, I think township staff and. Board of supervisors and all of them, everybody's been doing a good job to do that. Fortunately, we have very. Um, very fortunate taxpayers. And we're all, we're all. Appreciative of that, I'm sure. But, but yeah, we can do more of that. And I'm thinking the planning, uh, comprehensive plan should help with that. Right? So we can identify some areas that were, perhaps we should be establishing. Uh, more sinking funds to make sure there's, that Craig never has to come to us and say, whoops. We've got a problem that we don't have extra and in the bank account to cover, but, uh. But we're doing well, I think. I think we're doing very well.
Anything else? Um, I know I said operating is gonna look very similar to two thousand and twenty-one. Um, there is one. Increase in one of the line items. Um, that we're showing right now, but, and I know the police subcommittee met and discussed this. Um, but it's a request from the police department for two new officers. So I'm just gonna turn it over to Chief Kenny. For a brief.
Thank you, Phil. So, uh, yes, so I have had a couple of meetings with a couple of the board members. Um, we're requesting to increase our staff from the current eighteen to twenty. And we, uh, I intend to use these two additional officers as uniformed officers. And create, um, what we're gonna call community services. Um, unit where we'll assign two officers to this unit. And what we're finding is that we deal with some long-term. I, I use traffic as the best example. Traffic complaints. They're not a complaint that one officer can go and handle and be done twenty minutes later. A, we may, there, there are problems that require a length of time and commitment. And it's tough for patrol division to spend the time to do it. So this unit would be responsible for, and this is just one example of a traffic problem. Um, there are demands being put on us from the county level. Uh, of how we handle crime. Juvenile crime, how we handle juvenile crime. It's no longer. A type of situation where an officer does a report, files it, an arrest is made and we, and we book it and we're done with it. There's a lot of follow-through. There's a lot of alternatives. And what we're gonna try and do, and they all relate to, to bettering the community. So it's a perfect. You know, uh, unit for a community response unit to answer demands that this community. Um, wants answers to. And they cannot be answered by. An individual cop coming down one time and taking a report. And the best example, when today I met with, um, the subcommittee. There was a request to do some traffic enforcement on Dagger Road. And the gentleman, the resident called and said that day, he said, I really appreciate the officer came down. It's a shame he was only there for three minutes. And the officer had gotten a call, so he had to leave. So we'd like to be able to answer complaints. And I'm using traffic, but that's not traffic. Tessie, I can give you a copy this one more time. Um, that's just my, my blur of example of this unit would be assigned to that problem. And get to a resolution. And either the residents will be satisfied or, you know, we would solve the problem or we confirm that there is no problem, you know, we, we take care of the issue. But we, we don't just. Have one officer respond to an issue and it's done. So, um, they would be uniformed officers. Um, we're not asking for more inside people. We're asking for boots on the ground, people that can go out and solve problems. Is what the request is. Uh, to sideline that, you know, I did show and it's in here, we had a chart of officers that are eligible to retire. We're an older department, myself included. Uh, I'll start with me. Uh, we have of the eighteen, we have seven or eight of us that are eligible to retire. Either now or within two to three years. So we need to start planning for the future. We, we don't wanna get into a situation that we just ran into where we're short-staffed. And we had, you know, we were fortunate to hire somebody back in September that was ready to go. Uh, we're gonna look to, um. Get younger, plan for the future, and that's part of it. I can answer any questions you have briefly, but this, 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 uh, this report that I did does explain a lot of where we intend to use the officers. What their primary focus would be.
Well, I, I do have a comment, um, back in two thousand and fourteen, and I forgot to tell you this. That's the, uh, during that day. Two thousand and fourteen, we did a research, uh, former township officials here. And, uh, it looked, that study was specifically to look at staffing requirements often than usual. Right? So, uh, we looked at that and made some changes and then we moved on. Uh, I think we need to go back to that study, pull it back out, look at the conclusions and assumptions. Find out where those assumptions. Came, came to fruition. And, and where it fell down and, uh, take a look at it in context of what there, it's a different time, two thousand and fourteen. It's a different time, but we really need to pull out the resources that we had. Uh, try to understand and make the case if you need extra officers. Try to understand and make the case if you need extra officers or exactly why. And, and I don't even know the, I think he was a.
I believe he's retired. He was a regional police chief out in Mannheim area, York County.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, or the rest. So anyway, we need to dust that study off and take a look. So could you get that study out?
And, and off the top of my head, the, the bulk of that study was on, on calls for service. Which is, you definitely have to look at that. One of the differences in seven or eight years ago versus today is the type of crime today is not necessarily a quick call for service. Three calls today were scams where people lost thousands of dollars on their own phone, on their own computer. Two were at nursing homes. And that's part of this is getting back to going out and speaking to our elderly population of fraud. Fraud is our number one crime. The, the, the days of the, of, you know, the guns and stealing money is over. It's, it's much easier with a laptop. But I agree with you, Mark. And I'd be happy to look at that and, and, and do a comparison to today's update. I mean, it's, it's something that everybody is familiar with. It's, it's very easy. We did do some staffing comparisons, as you recall, they're in this packet also.
Yeah, we need to make sure we cover all bases.
Yep.
Have a good understanding of what we need, why we need, how it's different. Agree with you, all our staff is older. Or, or two thousand fourteen, it seems like yesterday, but that was quite a few years ago. For retirement purposes.
Yep.
And yeah, I think scams are the biggest problem. We have, we have a large population of retirees.
Yep.
It's a big problem. I don't know how to protect it, but I wish I had a better answer. I know you guys are trying to do what you can do. But, you know, the, the nursing home problem, retirement home problem is a big problem. There's been a lot of, a lot of money lost.
A lot of money, a ton of money. Our businesses are suffering from scams also. That, you know, without naming names, we, we, this year, this week alone, we probably had a hundred thousand dollars in theft. Just from frauds in the last three to four days. It's just incredible amount of money that is, that is through scams. But, you know, there's a lot in here. I am really considering the future and planning of what is coming and what we need to do.
Now, I just wanted to thank you for the very thorough presentation, Officer, I mean, Chief Kenny. You will be. So I did a little bit of research. And I just checked the neighboring municipalities and kind of of equal geographic size of lower wanted. And we are definitely understaffed. I think roughly the estimate for the ones that I compared our geographic size to are between twenty-two and twenty-five, which was represented by what the ICMA kind of says you need to be able to support a municipality of this size. In addition, you, you were correct. I mean, our population, our largest, our largest group of individuals that resided within our township is between the ages of fifty-six and sixty-five. Who are the individuals who are being scammed? And that population has surprisingly remained steady as far as who we represent. And, and so I, I just, you know, all of the things that you kind of presented to us, I just did my research. It's all accurate. I kind of think that it's very important. And I think that the most important part about this is your planning for the future so that we're not stuck two to three years from now with not enough staff to be able to support us and, and actually just carry out the everyday needs of the township as it relates to police and then public service. So I think the only question I really had was, are you requesting a sergeant and a patrol officer? Cause I think based upon what I saw as far as the municipalities, again, related to our size. That was consistently what they had. I think that's probably what is needed. And I just wanted to ensure if that request will be as part of your operation, you know, operating budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much.
So thank you for that. Following up on your statements about fraud. So would would you have the intent to set up a special fraud unit then? And have people with software skills and so forth?
Yes and no. The, the goal would be to go out and give community talks and lessons of what to be aware of at Spring House Estates, Falkways, all the different, that, that would be one. Secondly, I've seen small neighborhood, we have a lot of homeowners associations where we could do a group, you know, of, of a homeowner's visit, do it right out in the street of what to look for. So we want to do education on fraud. The Attorney General has experts that will come out and help us. There, there are resources. We can get the training ourselves, but there's also resources out there that they're, they would love to come in and assist us in putting on a presentation. We have one detective who is very, you know, he's learning more and more all the time. These, these crimes are very hard to investigate because the criminals are not in the United States most of the time. So the investigation of it is very difficult. I've yet to see a conclusion of where we make an arrest and money's returned. We have to stop it before it gets to that point. We have to educate our banks. Then one of the largest frauds we had two, three years ago was stopped by a bank attendant who realized, well, it wasn't a bank, it was the C V S when they're trying to get the five hundred dollar gift cards. So it's, it's education on our end of, and it's a constant education thing where we would be, you, I'd like to see us have a set date of a monthly. You know, we're, we're at Spring House Estates. Two months later, we're back again. Two months later, we're back again. It, we cannot hit it enough on that type of a program to let people know what is out there and constantly remind grandparents of what is happening. You know, my, my parents were very elderly. They just recently passed away a few years ago. I got to the point where I told my dad, you weren't allowed to answer the phone. That was the prevention for my family. Don't answer the phone. Because my dad would have believed anybody. You know, and that's what we're running into. That's one component of this. We have very active business campuses that would love some more education on you know, how to evacuate, how to lock down a building. You know, we recently went through some bomb scares at the school at Amber Yards. And they were looking at us, you know, our emergency plans, our, how are we set up? So that would be all these things that we would want to do with, with specialized. Not specialized, that's the wrong word, which is training. You know, this is simple training. Bringing in some people that have the knowledge and help us present to communities, businesses, schools, churches of that nature.
So in light of your in, in light of the upcoming anticipated retirements, what is, are you starting to put into place a sort of a timeline for when you need to start replacing or bringing in new people? And is that going to interfere with finding the two additional officers? You have commented in the past that the pool of potential employees is getting smaller.
So there's a couple of things we're looking at. Currently, the consortium of Montgomery County, we, we test yearly, we give a test in the summer. This past summer goes seventeen departments involved in the test. The other options are you could constantly have a resume hiring. Where you could, you could do both. You could, you could always be accepting resumes and you do a resume review where you can hire people that way. Trying to hire officers is becoming extremely difficult in that the numbers just aren't there. Years ago, there'd be a thousand people taking the test. This last test in July, we had a believe at the end of it, a hundred and four people that were eligible to be looked at to be hired from seventeen departments. It doesn't take long to go through a list and you're, you're struggling to find candidates. The other thing we're looking to do, so one of the, one of the problems, not a problem, but one of the things we have to overcome is we require the training ahead of time. We require all of our candidates to have act one twenty training, which is the six month police academy. If you want to apply here, you have to have that. Departments are finding that that's a deterrence. And if you're looking for diversity, which we, we are, that is another deterrence. That you're asking somebody to go through all this education, all this training and not even, you know, they run them at the Montgomery County Community College. They run them at Temple. They're full all the time. But people are going through this academy and are not getting jobs. When I got hired back in the Phil Donahue days, it was the complete opposite. You never had the training. You got selected and you were sent to train. And, and departments are finding that may be the way to go again. So we're talking about a thirty year commitment of millions of dollars over thirty years, that six months of, of us paying somebody to go to school should not be what decides whether or not we hire somebody. You know, and that's what we're saying. We, we require you to have that six month education before we'll even look at you. Like you can't even fill out our application. So I think, and, and we're not, we, we are being second class. We, we can choose to do what we want here. But I would like to do a hybrid model of, we would continue testing. We can also do some resume hiring and we can do other hiring and we cannot require. Now, if it comes down to two candidates and they're both equal, but one has the training and one doesn't. Well, the training would be a bonus. And, and you would say, you know what, why wouldn't we just hire this person? So my colleagues are finding that there are some good candidates that you would want to have that don't have the training. One of the candidates that we looked at in this past test was going through the academy, but he was an accountant major. So he was never interested in criminal justice in college. So he did not take the act one twenty when he was going through school. There's a lot of people like that. You know, they don't know at the time what they want. But I think we're, we're going to find better candidates by doing a hybrid model. We can do both. And, and come out with what we're looking for.
How much would it cost us, the township, to send somebody to?
So if we send somebody to the police academy, I believe the, the tuition is about five thousand dollars. I believe it's, it's, it's two semesters at the community college. But you are paying the person that whole time also. They're hired. Which you want that because then, you know, we're, we're monitoring their progress. They're going to show up every day. You know, that, that's, you know, I'm referring back to myself in nineteen eighty-five. This was, the police academy was run by the state police. So if you didn't show up, there was Sergeant Jackson, who I recall was calling our chief saying, where's Paul today? That didn't happen. You showed up every day. And the police academy now, you know, I went to the graduation a year ago, one of my nephews was in it. There's, out of the thirty people gone through the academy, four or five are, were already hired. They already had jobs. The larger departments and now some smaller departments are seeing the light here. You know, lower Marians, upper Dublin, they don't require act one twenty. They're looking at this as a thirty year investment. I'm not going to let six months decide whether or not I hire somebody or don't hire somebody. And there's, there's a lot. You know, the numbers will show that we're not going to get diverse candidates if we stick with the current consortium brand that we're following. They're, they're just, the candidates are not there. The numbers all in general are so far down that every category just dwindled.
So when are you going to implement the hybrid model?
Well.
Well, I just want to commend you on actually thinking about that process first, everything that relates to diversity overall, but what is the process or what, what do we need to do as a board in order to support you, I guess? Because I understand. I mean, you're asking somebody to take six months out of their life, go to the academy. Basically, you, you have to not work or work a job where it allows you to do that. And then pay the five to seven thousand dollars that I heard it costs to be able to attend the academy. It, it's a, it's a certain type of lifestyle or, or background that you have to have in order to be able to do that without any issues. And I think it limits the type of individuals that you're going to get if, if that is your process. So my question, I guess, would be what does the board need to do to support you in order to open that up? And what would that hybrid model look like? And also think, I just want to, because I might feel my not give it back. I just wanted to commend you on, on looking, looking towards the community policing model because I think that that honestly is the way that society as a whole is moving towards interacting with, with policing, trying not to criminalize every activity and be as supportive. Anthony Luca from the Attorney General's Office, I've worked with many times who does those trainings about fraud prevention to the elderly. It'd be awesome to bring him here.
So, so I, I'm a proponent of, if the expert's there, I, I, I let them come in and take the show. I'm not a, Craig will not agree with me, but I don't have to be front and center. I'm more than happy to let an expert come in and do the work for us. So the process, so the process is very simple. We don't, it's, it's, I'm writing, we have a hiring. We have a hiring, not a general order. It's, it's in our general orders and rules and regulations. We have a hiring. We're just going to amend it. And I think going hybrid is the way to go. And then, you know, then it's going to, it, it gives me more options to get to where we're looking to go. You know? The most important part of this, in my eyes, and it became very apparent in the last two months was we're, we're on a, such a thin line with the amount of officers that we have. And we had a few officers out on disability and we had an officer retire. We were down three. We were down three until we just hired this last person. It put a, it put a strain on just covering the street. And it was, it, it did cause some problems. You would be the first three to know if, if there was an emergency and I said, we need help. That did not happen. We're not even close to that. You know, the, I'm not afraid to put a uniform on either. I haven't had to do that. My guard and our lieutenant did put a uniform on for a week. I welcome, when we look at the study, for anybody to come in and look at, our staff were not top heavy. I believe in officers in uniform and officers in police cars. And that's, that's what the public wants. So that, that's the way to go. You know, we have one plainclothes officer who has a uniform.
So I need to finish that.
I'm going to write you, I'm going to write the hiring rules and, and pass them on. I'll send them to Craig and.
I know the committee just like changes at the beginning of the year around the hiring. And I haven't read them. I don't know if we adopted after that, that relates to the data.
Correct. That was, that was different than the hiring or hiring. Correct. Okay. Yes. Yeah. And, and that's, that's what's going to happen. I'm going to rewrite it. I'll send it to you. I'll send you the current model. We'll highlight the changes of where we'd like to go. And I think hybrid is the way to go. We could do the best of both because that's what I'm finding other people are doing. And, you know, all of a sudden, candidate A, who everybody is drooling over, but doesn't have act one twenty. I can't look at him or her. but doesn't have Act One Twenty, I can't look at him or her. Um, it gives us more, it gives us options, which is the best thing to have. Yeah. And, and that's what's happening. I'm seeing it. I'm seeing what our neighbors are doing. They stopped doing it. They stopped requiring Act One Twenty. Whipping, whipping does it, uh, um. So I'm not sure if Whitthing did away with the Act One Twenty, but they do resume hiring. Um, and Montgomery is testing, but they test on their own. And I, and I, and Danielle, I'm not. There's, there's, there's several that have done away with Act One Twenty. Okay. There's several of our neighbors have done away with it. Yes. Yeah. And I'm gonna steal from Horsham. They have a matrix where they've, you know, they have, they score on a resume, because a resume is, is, is tough. But they have a matrix that they look at and, and it's a scoring. So, yeah, it'll work.
Yeah.
So we, we, yes, we, we get um, we, weekly, monthly emails from just about anybody who says, I'm, I'm interested in becoming a police officer. When you're testing again, can you please let me know so I can fill out the application? A task is my resume. We would keep all those resumes on file. Um, and for a resume for something like that, we're not required to have Act One Twenty. Anybody can send us an email. And what we'll find is that some of those people do not have Act One Twenty. They may not live in Pennsylvania. So it would just be an active file that we would keep. And if we were looking to hire, we could look at either, you know, the, the consortium test, after a while, it, it runs its course and there's, there's just nobody left. So you're in a waiting pattern to hire. Going back to COVID, two summers ago, we canceled the test. That's why this test was in such demand. There was a full, there was two years where most of the seventeen communities that were involved in this previous test had not hired anybody. So there were departments like Capra, for example, hired, hired two and is looking for more. Uh, Limerick's hiring four or five. So that's unheard of for departments to be hiring that many. It's usually one here, one there, two here. You know, Abington, sure, they're hiring all the time. Uh, but it'd be, and they test on their own. So they're not stuck. You know, we, we are not big enough. It's difficult to run a test on your own. We're resume hiring. We could do ourselves. We could do it ourselves.
Chief, have you seen an employment agreement? If they're going through the academy, if we're, the municipality is paying for the academy, how long they are committed to that township or municipality?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not. I know that if another department steals the candidate within a year, they're, now, this used to be, this is very recent, you have to be reimbursed. So if we pay a candidate to go through the police academy and he starts here one week and then next week he decides to go to, you know, Whitthing. Whitthing's on the hook for that police academy money. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. I believe so. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. And, and we try and fish a lot of that out with our current candidates, you know, does the person, you know, um, one of the people in this last test that we really liked a lot, just signed on with the Pennsylvania State Police. So how long would that person have stayed with us? You know, i- if you're looking at the state police and you took that job, you may not be happy in Lower Glenning. You know, that, that, and, and I wish them well. That's what's difficult about hiring is you'd love to read their mind. You know, um, do they wanna work for Lower Glenning? Or do they wanna work for Philadelphia? Do they wanna work for the state police? You know, where do they really wanna be? In an interview, they all want the job, but what do they really want? And we've been very lucky. We've been, you know, our, our guys that do the backgrounds, we learn a lot that way. We've been very fortunate that the people that we've got here really do wanna work here. I'm out. Drop the mic. Yeah, right. Yeah. Not until we get a couple more. Okay. Is there any, any other questions?
Any questions from the audience?
I don't see any.
Okay. Um, like I said, the operating is gonna look very similar. Um, we'll add two officers. Okay. Obviously, the um, the budget will go out on the twenty-ninth. We'll have another meeting at the next meeting, very brief with the operating. Um, and then everyone can look at it. If anything needs to be changed, we can change it. Anything significant that needs to be changed, we'd have to advertise it again.
That was my question. But once we get it on the twenty-ninth, if there's, we just have questions or clear occasions emailing you, or do we need to meet as a whole? Meaning if we, if like, for example, I don't know, something that just didn't make sense or we didn't know about or whatever.
Yep, that is fine. You can email me or call me, email me, and I can answer the question.
But at the public meeting?
You know, um.
I forget, is it the ninth?
As the two officers being, you know, then we have to meet and if we're changing that line item to a certain point, we have to re-advertise it.
Gotcha.
So.
And so. And is there another, is there another comment appeared on the ninth or is that when we, what did you say about the nines?
The ninth is the next, uh, not the ninth.
That's the public advertisement?
Yeah, well, I'll ask you for authorization to advertise the budget.
Okay.
It'll go online. We'll have a copy here.
So we have between the twenty-ninth and the ninth to basically contact you with any questions, concerns?
Nope. Uh, you'd have from the ninth to the fourteenth.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So, all right. We have longer than I thought. Okay.
So it's.
So when do the different committees uh, put in for their budgets?
Um, EAC sent me an email today on some of what they're asking for.
Okay.
The other committees.
There's the only ones with the budget.
I'm sorry?
The EAC is really the only committee that has a budget.
You've always told the firehouses, the fire people knew was the, you know, if you have any, our budgets are now like, you know, like, we, we, that word has been sent to, I don't wanna call it committee, but to the firemen, to the.
The department has submitted or?
Well, the department has submitted through the, the department heads. Mitch Colt, who is online here, he is uh, recovered from an injury, so he's, but he's online. Sandy put in for hers.
So there's dogs. There's something.
The department has a dog.
The department head is a dog.
Okay.
Department head is a dog, focusing on this day to provide that to the board. I have a quick question though. Maybe, maybe she, you know, answered this. So it's a thirty year commitment for a police officer. Translate that in the dollar. What are we talking about when we hire a police officer?
I would say it's thirty plus.
Yeah, thirty plus. I, I just went.
I just.
I, I have no idea. Millions.
I mean nowadays, you know, someone comes in at, someone comes in at twenty-two. You know, they're working for thirty years. Well, they'll be working here for thirty-three years before they can retire at fifty-five. And then they go on to the pension. So, I mean. They're paying for a portion of it. Yeah. No, right. It's, they pay their portion. Um, I mean. I'm gonna go a little bit off, off, out of the box there with my comment though too, that the commitment is a, a huge investment of a good person. And we have high standards. We're an accredited department. The, the legal side of the commitment, that you need good people. You don't wanna make a mistake in hiring. And, and hire somebody that's gonna get you in trouble legally later also. There's two components to the investment. You, you have to hire the right people and believe that they're gonna keep your community safe. And keep, keep us safe also. Keep, you know, from, from any lawsuits.
That was part of the amendment that we started to make, where we hired our force, where that maybe we can have done something.
Correct. Right. So we just, we just had to do this for Sergeant Wilkinson who retired uh, last day of September. So Act Fifty-seven required us to go online and put, um, he's retired, and an explanation that, you know, was he, did he leave retired after ten years? You know, no. He re- he reached full retirement age and he is done with police work. Correct. Use of, any use of force complaints? So there's um, and, and we're seeing, you know, we're in the limelight um, more and more for some, some things that happen that cost money. Um, and I, I think it's a great time to be a law enforcement leader of a good department that you can shine and show um, how, how things can be done right. Um, there's always mistakes, but Act Fifty-seven is trying to capture those mistakes uh, with, you know, the last officer we hired. Now, he, you know, all these requirements just are just getting up to date now with MOPAC. But he would be a perfect example. He worked three years in Jankentown, got laid off. So Jankentown would have to go into MOPAC's website and say, what happened? He got hired at Bristol Borough part-time. But he left Bristol Borough to come here. So Bristol Borough is gonna have to put an acknowledgement out there. And that's something that we could then look at. You know, if we go to Bristol Borough and speak to their chief and he says he's a great guy, because he wants to get rid of him. Or is he a great guy because he's a great guy? So, you know, there's gonna be some requirements that MOPAC restrict, constraints they're putting on us to a answer as to when somebody leaves your department. Um, and we always hear this, it's in every industry. We hear it with teachers, uh, we hear it with everything of how, you know, the bad apple just gets moved along. So the state police, MOPAC is our training commission, is trying to curtail that.
Only asking how much does it cost? So, did you?
Well, and salary alone, I mean, you're at a hundred, you know.
Probably three to five million dollars.
Yeah.
Over thirty years. I mean, and, and, you know, I, I think maybe you took it the wrong way.
Yeah.
The wrong way.
Paul, I was saying they were, they're working. I'm not saying that you're just hiring someone to sit around, so.
I thought, I thought you took offense to me saying, well, they're gonna be here for thirty-two years.
No, no, no. I was just taking the outside thoughts.
Right.
Uh, look of how important an investment it is.
Correct.
Um, I'm digging wrong.
Okay.
I, I just want you to understand, there's another side to that investment also, that is not just financial. Your question was financial.
My question's.
That's Chuck and Craig that answer, um, what thirty years of salary would cost in benefits?
Well, it's the, it's the whole.
It's three to five million dollars.
Yeah.
All right. So that's a commitment. I'd say, say we can get a harder number.
Okay. Yeah, we can run, we can run the, those numbers.
I agree with you, Paul. It's, it's, it's long term. This is, this is.
Okay, I'm agreeing with you, Paul. It's long-term. So, yes, it's the cost of benefits and salary and training and it's also, you know, they're gonna need a car, they're gonna need equipment, they're gonna need all, all of this stuff. But the flip side of it is there's negative costs. If they make a mistake, how big is that mistake? What's this? Is it, is it a one-off? Can it be fixed relatively quickly or is it long-term? There's all those issues. So all I'm trying to do is quantify a number that everybody understands. If we're gonna put two officers on the force, I'm not making any judgment that they are or aren't needed. I hear your request. Made some good arguments here. I'm just wanna make sure everybody understands, this is the price. So when somebody says to me, well, how much does your police department cost you as a percentage of your revenues? It's over half your, your annual revenues. But that's okay if they know it, right? It's when they don't know it, they like fall off their chair sometime.
And that's why I was just trying to say the.
I know I'm digging into the weeds here. Um, of thirty years, six months is nothing. Six months salary of and tuition to send somebody to the police academy is, is nothing for what you're getting. So that, that's, that's my reasoning for, for looking at, it's silly for us to require Act One Twenty. A totally different argument, but that's, that's just silly.
Okay. If there's no more questions.
If there's no more questions, the show is over. Um.
Uh, sorry, there's.
We have a question.
No, it's not a question. It's just in the chat. It says, to Mark's point, this is, this is way communication, this is why communication with the community and transparency is so very important. I'm Deborah, Deborah Schiefer.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I just wanna thank, uh, you know, Jamie, Jamie Warmer, the Assistant Township Manager, and Mary Chisina, the Assistant Finance Director. Fred Zollers, the Public Works Director. Paul Kenny, the Police Chief of Police, and uh, and Chuck Wilson, the Finance Director, for putting this together and we'll get the operating out to you guys by the twenty-ninth.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Frank's really does all the work.
Yeah. Show's over.